Have you ever run across Kelly Rider?
I've not walked him off.
Or have you just pointed out that we can move CF in the agenda? Yeah, there is some others left. Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Marshall?
Present.
Councilmember Shrebnik?
Present.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
All right, if you will please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And it's been brought to my attention that Citizen Comments is not on the agenda, so if there are no objections, we will add Citizen Comments after the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as modified. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your concerns and comments about the city in general. And we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. There is a timer on the screen behind me, maybe? Okay, we will see if the clerk can start the timer and call the first person.
Paul V. O.?
Paul? Is Paul here? Pardon?
I'm Paul. I don't know if this is about me here.
Well, no, this is an opportunity for you to speak if you wanted to. What's your last name?
Right now?
Is your address 1-825-5? Oh, okay, that's you.
So if you want to speak, that was your opportunity. No, okay, fine, next person.
That's it?
That's it. Anybody else wishing to speak? Is there anybody else wishing to speak? So if not, I will declare the...
Oh, sorry.
We have somebody, okay, fine.
Sorry, Mayor. Vicki Grayland.
Hi, I'm Vicki Grayland, and I live in Kenmore. And I just have a brief statement. As a Kenmore citizen, I'm here tonight to make a citizen request that the city make alleviating climate change effects an economic priority for the 2019 budget. Climate change is already affecting our economy. We need to identify it as an issue and make our intention clear to alleviate its effects. We need to get in front of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grayland. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing no one coming forward, I will close public comments. Ms. Grayland, thank you for your comments tonight. This is a perfect time to bring it up because we are starting to talk about the budget. So thank you for that. All right, next item on the agenda is the Kenmore... Yeah, well, let's... There was something else here that we wanted to change in the agenda. So if there are no objections to the council, I would like to move the incubator report to the last item because of the number of people here for the first two items. If that's okay with you?
Our presenters are still available.
Okay, we have presenters with this. So maybe we better leave it the way it is. Okay, fine, we'll leave it the way it is. First item on the agenda, then it's the incubator report. Yeah, if you want to sit at the table.
Do you have to deal with you're all by yourself?
Mayor and council, good evening. We are going to give you a fairly brief update tonight on the Kenmore Business Incubator Program. Oh, good, Kathy, thank you. And we generally try and do this about once a year. So the last time that we briefed the council was in June of 2017. And I am thrilled to be joined tonight by a quartet of Kenmore residents who are all involved with the incubator. To the left is Corey Hansen, he's our program consultant. Next is David McLean with E-Talitics Company. Jason Carbaugh is with Mectron, and Kathy McLean is with E-Talitics. So they'll have a chance to tell you about their role in the incubator and their work with us to date. Yeah, I'll just use the mouse. Okay. So since the incubator got started... Actually, I want to go back. Over 50 businesses have been served since 2013, either as incubator clients or they took part in a business acceleration program that I'll be talking a little bit more about. And of those companies that we've worked with as incubator clients, over 300 jobs are associated with those companies. The incubator program offers low-cost workspace. We lease some office space at the corner of 73rd and Bothell Way. And for those businesses who don't want or don't need the office space, we have what we call the virtual incubator program, which allows them to work with Corey, our business development consultant. And that's in individual or group settings. So for example, Wednesday evening, there'll be a group session of mostly virtual incubator clients. Sometimes the in-house companies come to those as well. And then we have other services available to them. Some of the highlights in the last year is we have been in our second year of receiving Port of Seattle Economic Development Partnership Grants. That has allowed us to offer extra, what we call, business acceleration training. And that has gone very well. It's expanded our reach in the community and also has resulted in additional incubator clients. We're currently working with about 20 companies. Six are in the incubator space, the other 14 are virtual clients. We've also gotten a lot more clients, as I mentioned, because of the business incubator training. We've also gotten some recognition here and there. And that includes some media coverage. We've been asked to do presentations in different venues, like to the Port of Seattle Commission. We've also heard from other cities who are thinking about emulating this program in their own city. And in fact, Auburn got an incubator program started with some of their Port of Seattle grant money about a year ago. And the mayor and I can trace that to a presentation that we did several years ago for a Sound Cities group. And the mayor of Auburn was there, kind of took a shine to the idea, and the rest is Also, we're not showing the video tonight, but the city was awarded a Municipal Excellence Award from the Association of Washington Cities for Economic Development. And the video that was shown at the conference where the award was presented featured the incubator. And it was... Jason was in that, so was Corey. So they've gotten a lot of exposure lately. Speaking of the business acceleration class, thanks to the Port of Seattle, we've been able to do four different series that started... The first one was in 2016 in the fall, and the most recent one ended up in early March this year. You may see a few familiar faces there in the classes. A lot of Kenmore residents took part in that. It was six weeks of training. And there were quite a few businesses who hadn't had contact with the incubator before that took part in this. And then, as you see, some became new clients, including Dr. Curtis. So we're pleased about that. We have gone from one business in 2013 to 34 that we have worked with as incubator clients in about five years. And this is the entry hall into the incubator space. And I ran across this photo from 2014, when we had three clients for the program. And as you can see, now it looks quite a lot different. And not all the logos are up there. And I thought this would be a good time for Corey to say a few words about the work that he has done, and he really makes this program tick.
Well, I'll actually give credit to them, but you get to work...
Is your mic on? Is it bright green?
There we go. Thank you. So this is the four-year anniversary of my association with the... Working with Nancy and the council here on the incubator. And I have to say, it's been much greater and much better than I actually anticipated. And having worked with a lot of businesses, and it turns out, I was pleased to find out that there are a lot of really growing and very phenomenal businesses here in Kenmore that you don't normally see unless you start really digging and trying to help, like the council has done, to help these businesses grow and stay. And we've had a lot more success keeping businesses than I would have thought. I remember specifically, one of the businesses here in the area was concerned that, why do we have an incubator when you grow them and then there isn't any office space here and then they go elsewhere? Well, as it turns out, there is office space here. You do have to be patient, and we certainly could use a lot more. But even if there isn't office space for them to move in directly right away, they are staying affiliated and are very happy to be affiliated. And give a lot of credit to this program, and I think rightly so, because the goal has been to help them get ahead faster than they would on their own. And, you know, I guess you all can speak better to that than I can.
So sometimes people think of a business incubator program and they think, oh, it's all tech companies. But you can see that there is a great variety of companies in the sectors that they work in. I'll say right now, Jason's business is quite new. And the same business acceleration class that he was in, there he was, brand-new business. But one of the other people in the class, who later became one of our virtual clients, his business has been in his family for 80 years. So it's not just for startups, and it's not just tech. And let's hear from the two companies that are with us tonight.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's David McLean. I'm the CEO of E-Talitics, Inc., but I'm here also as a 14-year resident of Kenmore. We came here, brought here by Microsoft. And our children have gone to Inglemore High School, and we love this community. We're very active in it. In 2011, I left amazon.com with the idea of starting a business. And you should be looking at my hair color and going, aren't you thinking about retirement instead, Dave, out there, rather than sitting in an incubator? But we start out in 2011, and we started a small company that was somewhat a lifestyle company, and we were doing consultative work. We were making brands very successful on amazon.com. And the number-one bicycle on Amazon is not a Schwinn, it's not a Huffy. It's a bicycle brand called 630 that we've helped to go and make successful. The number-two insect repellent that's selling out by container loads right now during Prime Day, if the site's working, is not Cutter, and it's not off. So we give mid-sized companies the ability to go and be successful. And this is a consultative operation with a little bit of tech and things like that. And we saw the opportunity to grow our business, but we didn't quite understand how. We changed our name, we started the business, and we talked to Nancy, and she said, we've got this incubator here, and we've got this fantastic consultative leader here, Corey Hansen, who has got a tremendous amount of prior experience. And he brought us in, and she said, come on over to the incubator, you should join it and join this accelerator program. The value that we started getting from this was almost immediate with Corey going and looking at our business plans and our assumptions. And again, gray hair, guy that's been around the block doing business plans and business models. I've got some fairly sophisticated things going on with what I'm trying to do with the business. And Corey was taking us to a whole different level, challenging us to question everything that we were doing, and helping to accelerate us and helping us break through some self-imposed constraints, and then looking at market constraints. So that we went and built a business plan that was not a $5 million business plan, but we have a $15 million multi-year business plan right now. We were very software-focused and very tech-focused, and a lot of the things that he challenged us to do is to look at how we were going to market and what our value was. And a lot of our value is people. And that means putting people in place and not working virtually, but having a need to go and put people here in Kenmore in an office building so I don't have to commute. And we need that office space, and we want to go and put in about 15-plus people as soon as we can to hire from the University of Washington, train graduates, because it's going to be a fantastic model, and build our business in this multi-year plan. But we've got so much from the incubator with helping to motivate us. We've got peer relationships we never thought we would have in the city, incredibly brilliant people. And we have all of these resources to draw from that I frankly didn't know we could get our hands on, anywhere from digital advertising to coaching us on social media, a bunch of the things that we just didn't know. And kind of the final piece of it is, I like to give back to my community. And this has given me a venue of giving back to other entrepreneurs and both getting peer-level coaching from them in their stages of growth, as well as me helping them. It's very fulfilling. Thank you.
Yeah, Jason.
Thank you. My name is Jason Carbaugh. I'm a new resident of Kenmore, having lived here for about a year. And my daughter goes currently to Inglemore High School, and we love the city as well. I am also a new business owner in Kenmore. And I'm actually a member of the Kenmore Business Incubator, so my business is located inside the incubator. So I'd like to thank Nancy for the opportunity to come here tonight. And Mectron is an engineering services company. So we provide engineering services primarily machine and control design. And we do this to provide custom automated equipment for the use in factories to assemble, lift, put together, test products as they go down an assembly line. So that's our business. And we serve primarily, right now, the aerospace industry, but also other small light manufacturing here in Puget Sound area. My story starts fairly recently. In September of 2017 was when Mectron was incorporated. And in all of Q4 of that year, we had a grand total revenue of, wait for it, $9,000. So we had a long way to go, and I enrolled in Corey's Business Acceleration Program, sort of skirting the prerequisites of having been in business for three years. And he let me in on a technicality, I think. But since then, in the first quarter of 2018, we actually experienced revenue growth of 3.8 times the previous quarter. And then for Q2, another 3.2 times. So we're on the track, just starting from a much smaller starting point, I would say. So currently, we have one full-time mechanical engineer on staff, one part-time, and we occasionally engage two contractors. So our shorter-term goal anyway is to do about $1 million in business with a staff of about eight people, both in the incubator and working from home some of that time, to get to $1 million in revenue before we begin to think about the transition to a space that would involve engineering office space as well as light industrial space to begin to assemble, put together the machines that we design to offer turnkey automation to factories in the area. So that's a little bit about our plan. As far as the KBI goes, we have been very appreciative of all the benefits that have come from it, business consultation being high on that list, certainly Corey's multiple venues of training, as well as collaboration with the folks inside the incubator. Just even though we have very different businesses, you know, what challenges are you facing and how have you solved them? Those kinds of contacts and interactions have been invaluable. Also, you know, because it is a low-cost workspace for a new business, we're able to focus on applying the limited income that the business generates to, you know, get key employees, get the equipment and capital, intensive, you know, computer systems that our business needs going. And having that little bit of breathing room helps to do that, helps to get off the ground that way. And just finally, you know, one of the unsung benefits of being in the Kenmore Business Incubator, of course, is downstairs is Karen brewing, so that's always a benefit to the employees. Thank you.
Kathy, did you want to add anything?
David spoke for me, but, you know, overall, I've really appreciated the synergy and just meeting other... There are so many home-based businesses, surprisingly, in Kenmore, and just bringing those people out of the woodwork to meet them. And we're actually... Many of us are helping to kind of give each other business and grow. And Kenmore, to me, is a unique place, being located midway right between the 5:00 and the 4:05, and with all of the traffic. I think there's really a lot of potential here for some very big development and more office space. And we don't want to commute to downtown. And, you know, we're a virtual company. We have up to like 15 people working for us, but they're all spread out all over the state. And we want to hire. We now see the need for having an office where people have to come in and work under a port to us. But it's actually been very... All the guidance has certainly opened our eyes to a lot, you know, we thought we knew it all. And so it's been really helpful.
I think it's important to note, too, is that we've been working together, both as husband and wife and CEO, CFO, for some time. We've got a lot of guidance just on how we work together, too. It's been valuable.
And you're far from...
And stay married, yeah.
You're far from being the only couple who runs a business together. We have a number of companies that do. And I first met Kathy when we were in design phase for City Hall, and she was on the Public Art Committee. So nice to be back in touch. So I just want to run through quickly some other slides and show you. Here are the companies that are now in-house at the incubator. And actually, Jason told me that he learned about this when you were here for Christmas tree lighting, and there was a flyer in the lobby. And I got an email from him the very next day. So then, our virtual clients. This is the first page of virtual clients. And there you see E-Talitics in the bottom-right corner, and more, a couple of familiar names on this one. And we just got two new virtual clients last week. Now, some of the... Here are some of the companies who have moved on and we're still definitely in touch with them, and it's worked out well. You heard the companies mention the opportunity to collaborate with each other, and that does happen. I see it happening all the time. And you heard a year ago from Red Barn Engineering, who has, you know, they outgrew their space in the incubator, and now they're located just west of Kenmore Camera. But walking through the lobby one day, and here they are with one of our other virtual clients, Horizon View Homes, a contractor, and they were in for permits to work on a project together. And so that we have gotten a little bit of interest from other cities. And in one week earlier this year, the mayor and some other officials from the city of Snoqualmie wanted to come over and take a look at the facility and talk with us. And then later that same week, a slightly larger city, the city of Seattle, came to visit with a bunch of people from their Economic Development Office. And they were wondering, how did Kenmore do this? So quickly, and some of these things you've seen before, but just an update on the number of jobs, the revenue from client fees, and how that has offset some of our major expenses. Won't take much time on that, but you can see the number of jobs that are associated with these companies. And then here's a little bit more budget history compared to where we were over the last couple of biennia. Again, we look forward to discussing this in upcoming budget for '19 and '20. As you may know, the incubator is in the Strategic Opportunities Fund, and that's probably something that will be one of the things discussed. Our advisory group is small but mighty, and we don't meet with them near... Our advisory group is small but mighty and we don't meet with them nearly as often as, as we'd like, but everyone's pretty busy. But they are helping us look forward to where this program could go in, in the future. So all good, strong people. Ray Mosher, he, he and I worked together, together at King County. He was in charge of economic development programs at, at the county before retiring in the last couple of years. And he has family in Kenmore, so he, he has a good connection. And so finally, here's what the incubator building looked like when, when we got started in, in 2013. And, and just as we heard in the lobby tonight from someone who had seen the sign on that major street and, and wants to learn more about the incubator. So it, building looks different now, the street trees are bigger and, and there is a brew pub downstairs. But the same kind of good work goes on. So thank you very much and open for questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Well Nancy, I, I want to always recognize the hard work you've put into this. I appreciate all of that. That's a nice presentation. As you've known, I've always been a little skeptical of this as a part of our economic development, especially with the question of the chicken or the egg around office. But I have seen some positives around us using the virtual incubator to help home-based businesses in Kenmore be more successful. That's a definite net positive to the city. I do have some questions though about some of the, well, maybe I'll just ask this. How do we, how are virtual incubator folks, participants picked? Are there any restrictions? Do they have to somehow have a nexus with Kenmore? Because I was slipping through some of those and a couple of them jumped out at me and I looked them up and it looks like they had physical addresses in Bothell or in downtown Seattle. And so I'm trying to figure out what the nexus is with, with some of these folks, especially because one of them, Northwest Trophy is a direct competitor to a long-time business that we have in Kenmore. That kind of jumped out at me is, and then I looked them up to see if they had any sort of Kenmore connection. All I could find was Stewart Street or something downtown. So could you talk a little bit about how folks qualify to be part of the virtual incubator?
Uh, we don't put a strict limit on, on where someone, you know, is, is located. In the, in the case of Northwest Trophy, that company has been in, that's the one that's been in business for 80 years. And so, and, and one of their, one of their locations is downtown, the others in, in Woodenville. We got to know the, one of the owners through North Shore Rotary, which, which serves Kenmore. And, and Gary has typically come to Kenmore Business Alliance meetings even before getting involved. So he is someone that the city does business with from time to time, but he is very, very tied to this community. So that's, that's one example. So we, we don't, we don't have a, you know, a real strict limit on where, where you're located, but, and as long as we have the capacity, you know, to, to work with, with businesses, we'll, we'll continue to be judicious but, but a little flexible on that.
I'm just slightly skeptical of us essentially spending city resources to help a company that's well-established and has been established for 80 years. You know, they, they could go pay for a business consultant and get the same sort of services. And I think what we're trying to do here-
They're, they're paying now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it market rate or are they paying?
It's, it's, it's a very reasonable fee, but, but I, I think it's not only, like I said, sometimes incubators are, are really focused on brand-new businesses, but we have found that the ability to work with a, a business who has been established for some period of time and really help them accelerate, it can be very valuable as well.
I'm just trying to figure out what the next, what the outcome is for Kenmore, you know, with a business like that. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just skeptical when I was looking through the, through the list of, of, of companies that were involved. And, you know, at the end of the day, I'm hoping that what we're trying to do is to grow businesses in Kenmore, grow, help businesses in Kenmore become more successful.
And we agree wholeheartedly with that. That actually is the primary focus and there's always a preference given to this.
Right. Of course.
And the other one is anyone who is working with us does do business here in Kenmore.
Uh huh. Okay. Well, thank you.
And, and for those businesses who are in the, in the office space, in, in their agreement, they agree to make their best efforts to locate in Kenmore when they've, when they're no longer in, in that office space. And I would point to Red Barn, who was fortunate enough to find office space.
Where are they located?
Where are they?
Yeah.
They are in the, in the northwest corner of, of the, the lot, you know, just over west of Kenmore Veterinary Clinic.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a, where Speedy Reedy used to be and then, and where Planned Parenthood used to be.
Yeah, next to Minnehans.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they also hired two new people last week.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I could say a lot, but I'll be brief. To specifically address this issue, Gary kind of has been an active member of the Kenmore Business Alliance. He's part of the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce. So he's involved in a lot of things that are city-related, even though his business doesn't physically happen to be in Kenmore. But he, he gives and serves a lot of Kenmore issues. For me, I could not have started a business at all without the help I've gotten. I come from, I guess you could say the corporate world. I'm, I'm a doctor for 35 years and there, I show up, I see patients and other people sort of take care of the business stuff. And what in the world would I know about running my own business? Zero. And I could not have been successful without the questions that Corey asked. He always asks the hard questions. And sometimes I don't know the answers and I have to go think about them some. But that's good. He doesn't take things for granted, assume that I know what I'm doing. I got this great idea and then he pushes me to understand it better and clarify it. So it has been, made the difference literally between me being successful and having no chance of success at all. And I actually have the Integrated Care Solutions and then I have another business as well. And both of them are moving along, maybe not at the pace that Corey would like me to go. Corey's idea of acceleration is a speed car. Mine, mine might be a VW, but it's going. And I would have had no chance of doing that without the help I've received. So I, I am definitely supportive. And some of the things I don't think are the city's job necessarily to fix, and that is office space. How can you create an infinite variety of office spaces? We need to zone, we need to be flexible, we need to make, make it successful for people to come develop office space. And that, that's the council's job. But not necessarily to build all that office space, just to make it a favorable climate for it to happen.
Right. And, and we've had the opportunity when we've been working through the Economic Development Strategy Update about what kinds of, of activities are, are possible for the city to consider.
Councilmember Smith.
I will also keep it brief, but I would like to thank you Nancy for all your work on this and obviously Corey for everything you've done in the program. I too was probably a little more critical than I even thought I would be, being a small business owner of the program and of the use of the city funds. But as, as I've learned more about it, as I've got to know a number of the businesses that have graduated and evolved through their growth of the, through the incubator program. And you see them regularly at the, you know, Bothell Kenmore Chamber and the KBA meetings. And, and I do, the office space had always been sort of an issue for me, but I think as it's evolved into more the incubator side or the virtual side, I think that's been a, a good change and kind of an evolution of the program. And, and I do think that the, the graduates are, even those, maybe a lot of them don't end up right here in Kenmore, but I do see them as somewhat ambassadors for what can, who we are and what we are and what we're trying to do here. And I do think there is some value in that. And I too know, I've got to know Gary and he is a, he's a good guy, he's very involved. And so anyway, I just, I appreciate the update and, and yes, we'll still keep a critical eye on the, the budget aspect of it, but we're also, I'm also quite pleased with how it's, it's moved along.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, any others?
Another comment on how businesses work together. So like mine is a virtual business and I work out of my home for both of my businesses. And one of them's real estate, so I used one of the Gomez, Get Gomez, to help me sell my two houses that I've done so far. So you won't see any business space or office space, probably for them or me, but yet here's two businesses in Kenmore helping each other to succeed.
And for those of you on council who haven't had a chance to visit the, the space itself, we're, we're happy to arrange for you to, to come over and, and meet some of the companies who are there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Nancy, I want to, I want to echo that. I mean, taking it where we started to where it is today, you know, you know, I've been a big supporter of this, but it's, it's really good. You've done a tremendous job, so thank you very much.
Thanks for your support. I have to just say one more thing. I always think of what my spouse came home from, from work one day and, and said, you know, there's this guy in my office, he, I don't think he has any connection with, with Kenmore at all and, and doesn't know that I have a connection with Kenmore, but somehow there, maybe there was an article in the, in the Business Journal or something and he said, yeah, Kenmore, there's some cool things going on in Kenmore. They have an incubator and everything. So I always think of that. So the, the word gets around. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the financial assistance strategies for mobile home parks. Mr. Sullivan, welcome. Ms. Spint and Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, council. So we're here to continue the discussion related to mobile home parks. And you've received the recommendation from the Planning Commission on July 9th. So I'll keep that in the back of your mind. And tonight, this piece, we're going to talk about direct assistance strategies, so finance strategies that might support some of those recommendations. So while we're not expecting you to make a decision tonight, this is just for your information, we would ask that you keep this information alive and well till next week when we come back and continue the discussion of recommendations. And hopefully next week we'd be looking for direction on both the land use side of this topic as well as the direct financial assistance. So then staff can move forward and then bring back some information for you to make a decision on. So that's all I have to say. We have Arthur Sullivan with us from Arch tonight and he's going to step through the information for direct assistance. So basically summarizing the information that was in your packet and following the brief PowerPoint will be available for questions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not Arthur Sullivan, but I am going to go over the first few slides and then turn it over to Arthur. So Debbie described where we are in the project and again, no action is expected tonight. Really we're trying to provide more of an educational framework for these direct assistance financial strategy, strategies. So as you'll recall from last week, we went over the background of the mobile home parks, sort of general information. We talked about the size of the parks ranging from nine to 78 units. Most of the homes, with the exception of two that we know of, are owned by the homeowners while the pad is rented. Many of the homes cannot be moved. The rent, there's quite a range of rent. We know of some at 450, we know at some at 1,500 a month. Generally, we thought it was about 600 to 650 a month. A new two-bedroom in the Spencer 68 project at 50% average median income rents for $979. 52% of the residents are low-income and two of the parks are restricted to those who are 55-plus. So again, in your packet, there's a map of the parks. There are six parks, five property owners because the two parks on, the smaller parks on Northeast 181st Street are owned by the same individual. And there are a few more than 250 homes in those parks. So the Planning Commission last week presented their recommendations. They were talking about four different options. I won't go over those this evening, but we will be revisiting those next week when we come back to get some preliminary direction, hopefully on the, both the strategies to approach the parks and, and the financial assistance information. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arthur, who will continue the presentation.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So in your packet, there were four areas that I want to sort of walk through that are ways the cities could use some direct assistance resources in combination with some of the land use tools in order to help implement some of the different options that you reviewed with the commission last week. Our objective tonight is to try to answer, clarifying questions you may have and also to see if there's any other additional information that you would like us to work on in between the meetings as well. I am perfectly comfortable if we took each one of the topic areas and then opened it up to questions for you so that you wouldn't have to remember them throughout all the other elements. So please fill up, if we do it that way, that works just as well for me. So maybe we'll go that way. There's four different areas in which there is some form of potential, what we would consider more in the realm of direct assistance or tools that relate to direct assistance that could potentially be used. The first is transfer of development rights. The second is fees and lieu. The third is finding ways to reduce operating costs to property owners. And the fourth is, are there ways of providing relocation assistance if there are parks that are redeveloped for the existing homeowners? So those are the four areas that I was going to cover tonight. They're covered in the memo as well, so you can follow along there as well. So the first one, transfer of development rights. Transfer of development rights as a basic concept is where you take a landowner and you say, you keep something at less than what you might otherwise be allowed to do and in exchange for doing that, we're going to let you exchange some of that value for reducing it to somewhere else. And so that's often referred to as sending areas and receiving areas. And where it's most common, where you may have come across this, is in the area of open space preservation. So King County has a fairly extensive program, some of the cities and members of Arch have it as well. And so the idea is if you agree to keep it open space and you sign a covenant to say, we'll stay in that use, so here you're restricting use, which is an important distinction between this and in lieu. Then you say to them, well, we'll let you sell that right and we have areas in which they can build it some higher than a base capacity if they purchase those credits from you. And they're willing to do so because they're able to build more in the receiving areas. So that's the basic concept. And looking at that concept, that means you need to have sending areas and you need to have receiving areas. The concept here that we're sort of visualizing might be utilized is the sending areas would be those manufactured home communities that you would like to potentially see the use preserved. And so you would pick any or all of the existing manufactured home communities in order, and call those your sending areas. Your receiving areas, potentially, you already have a number of areas in your city in which you create a base density, but you have provisions to allow higher density in exchange for some public benefit. At this point in time, that's primarily for affordable housing. It's also in some areas, I believe you also have some provisions related to open space. And those areas consist of the TOD overlay area, the downtown residential DR area, the downtown commercial, the DC area, and also the regional business. In those areas, if you look at your bonus provisions, there are the potential for three, of up to or more than 3,000 bonus units. And if you look at what the base air density is in those areas and then you look at what you're allowed to go up to. And actually that number could be a lot higher. The 3,000 was based on the TOD being at that minimum up, up that you can go, you know, where you start out at. But you do, you incorporate- But you do, you incorporated provisions to go even higher than that. So the 3,000 is based on the lower end of the range for the TOD overlay. So that's, those are sort of, it's sort of to start the conversation of looking at the concept of TDRs. Now you have to ask yourself, if you wanted to preserve, how much credit do you give somebody if they're going to keep it in their use? So typically, like in King County, it's like, well, if your land was zoned to allow five units, you get five credits, and you can sell those five credits somewhere else. So what we've done in this chart that's in the memo and is on this graphic up here is we've shown you the difference between the number of manufactured homes there are currently on each of the properties versus what the density currently allows those properties up to their ba, high end of their base density. So that's the gap. So you can see that ranges anywhere from eight units and 15 units for the two along the river to 40, to as much as 95 units for the ones that are in the more central area of the community. So that's one way you could look at it, is say, well, how many units are, you know, they have so many today, and how many could they have done if they redeveloped? And that could be one way of calculating how many TDR units. You could use some other math, but that's a simple, straightforward way of looking at it. Another way we looked at it though, is, is that when you, you look at the value of the TDR credit, common sense says, what's somebody willing to pay? Well, when you, what you want to do is look at your receiving area and basically look at what land values are for the type of residential development at the type of density that would be allowed in, in the receiving area. Well, that's a higher density. Higher densities usually get less per unit than lower densities. And hard to say exactly what the number is now, but it's probably somewhere, it might be 30,000, maybe a little bit lower, maybe 40, up to 40,000, maybe a little bit higher. So that's basically what somebody's probably in the ballpark of what they're willing to pay. So that's one thing to consider when you're doing it. So one thing we did, if you look at that second row for the two areas, Lakewood and Inglewood East, those are lower density areas than the receiving areas. And so we sort of said, hmm, what is land going for in a lower density area? And it's more. So if you just did a one-to-one, the sender is only going to get, like say, 30,000, but if they were selling their land right now as a townhouse development, it's probably worth more. So we basically said, you might want to consider if you do this, that for those two areas that have a low density from where they are, that in order to get them the equivalent value, when they go to sell, you might give them more credits per unit because the receiving area, those developers are going to pay less. Does that make sense? Does anyone have questions about that? That's probably the most confusing concept, I think, that we've, in putting this together. Okay? Yes?
Councilmember Smith.
So in that, on the receiving end of the transfer, the, you still have to stay within the maximum bonus allocated ordinance.
Correct.
And so do you, usually, there was a, there's a benefit that's associated with if you're doing those, you know, let's just say you're, you're adding affordable units at so many additional dwelling units, then you get an additional benefit. Maybe it's diminished parking requirement or, I, who knows what it is.
Right.
So does that transfer as well within that development transfer?
So that's probably more relevant to the in lieu fee option.
Okay.
Here, what you're basically going to do is you're going to allow, you, in all these areas, one of the ways you get that extra density is by providing the public benefit. What you would do in a TDR program is you say, you don't have to do those for those units you're buying TDR units for. So they would still be capped using the same maximums, but you'd say, a builder, you can either get your incre, you know, so let's say there is a site in this receiving area that says, I want to build more than is allowed. What you would potentially do is now give that builder several ways that they could get extra density. One is they meet your existing provisions. All I will do of every three, one of them will be affordable under your current provisions. A second is you could say, hey, we have some TDR program going on here, so you could just go buy some TDRs. And if you do that, that meets the requirement to get the extra density. And then you're going to see, we're going to also propose potentially in lieu fee as a third approach for generating revenue that could be used for some of the options. So you're basically still keeping the same model of all the densities, your bases and your increases. You're just creating a couple of different tools developers could choose to use to get that increase.
So that, that actually makes sense. So you're strictly focused on the actual development units?
Right.
And not all the other aspects?
Exactly. And so that's why when you design programs like this, you have to think like a developer and go, well, what are they, you know, just like with the in lieu, all of these are going to come back to, well, what would a builder with no restrictions be willing to pay to get extra density?
Okay.
And that's always what you're working with when you design programs like this.
So can I ask you, since we've had difficulty getting the development in the TOD with these bonuses under our current code, because apparently it's, it's, there's not an economic feasibility level that can be reached in that as of yet.
Right.
Obviously, that can change over time. So if it's not working even without the TDR from the, do you, do you see that as a tool that actually may help promote that development or actually hinder it because it adds more, more of a bureaucratic?
Right.
Mess to the process?
I was probably going to address that comment in the in lieu, but it may work equally well with TDR. And you made a good qualifying comment, which is yet, okay? Redmond didn't see anything for five years after they adopted provisions for mandatory affordable housing. And it wasn't because of the affordable housing provisions, it was because the market wasn't there in general yet for that community for the type of buildings that they were looking for. So sometimes it's not uncommon in the cities I've worked in that the plan is created and then you don't see the units for like five years or so. And that's hard on a council who wanted to see a vision of a community, but that's maybe because you're ahead of the times. So that is not an uncommon feature. When you start giving more choices, and some of those choices are to just pay essentially versus have to provide affordable, we often, history and other experiences in other communities, when you allow builders to start paying instead of providing affordable units, they usually like that as an alternative. So these are tools that may help, I can't guarantee, or you, you may, and this is where you have the flexibility of what you're willing to pay or sell or things like that, and that's sort of this last point that's in here, which is, how do these transactions occur? How does this credit get moved from property A to property B? And one is, allow the market to do it. And in some respects, that's a clean way, that's how the market works. A landowner who has TDRs might say, hmm, market's not here yet, I want to hold on to them. Someday, these are going to be worth a lot, I'm going to wait. Others may be more anxious, well, then they have the right to try to find a buyer sooner than later. So one approach is just let that negotiation occur directly. You don't necessarily know what the price is that there's in that exchange. Odds are, though, it's going to be based on that concept I explained. The second is, you, the city, could act as a bank. If you're worried about certain one end of the other happening, then especially for the sending sites, okay? If you're worried about the sending site side, you may decide you want to become that bank. And there, you're now taking on some of that risk that a landowner is taking on. And so that's a choice you could potentially look at. King County does that with their open space program, right? They will buy credits and then they turn around and they sell them to other buyers in other parts of the county or in some of the cities they've made arrangements. So that's where you would be acting as a bank system for a TDR program. And that's, so one is, you know, so that's taking it to another level. Issaquah has been looking into that a little bit for their open space preservation because they had an area they wanted to preserve right away. So that's, that's where this would take, this approach would go the first in terms of direct city involvement.
Deputy Mayor.
So correct if I'm wrong, but if I'm wrong, but what I think I just heard is that if we were to allow this to happen in TODs, we would be essentially, I mean, right now, we're set up to, if you want additional density, you're going to build some affordable housing. Just let people buy around that. So we would be, we would be preserving some affordable housing, but essentially selling or not getting other affordable housing?
Correct.
Through that.
Correct. You, and, and to clarify, there's an important distinction, especially between TDR and in lieu. You're preserving the use.
Right.
That use has, has been historically affordable, but there isn't necessarily an explicit affordability provision.
Right.
You're going to see that within lieu. Okay? But yes, that's the trade-off that you're making.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that then. Thank you.
But using the TOD as an example, you could sell some of those, or development rights for market rate, but you still have a, an affordable component on the project itself.
If they went above the TD, if the TDRs were not enough, in other words, if all's they needed, if somebody only wanted to do 20 extra units?
Right.
Then if they bought 20, they would not have any affordability on that site.
On that 20.
But you would have preserved some of the manufactured homes in exchange for that.
Right.
As a use.
Right. But let's say that there was a requirement, I'm just going to pick a wild number, there was a 400 unit complex going up and 10% of that was supposed to be affordable.
You might.
Well, they bought 20.
Mm-hmm.
So that means there's still 20?
Correct.
Affordable units that were required.
They would still be, right. If it's a bigger project and they're not using all, right, then they'd have to kick in the formula for the extra, the additional units.
Okay.
Yes.
Fine. Councilmember Marshall.
What would be the recommended duration of the credits? What's the model for that? Are they perpetual?
Perpetual. You're giving up a land right, right? You're transferring a land right.
Oh, Councilmember Danuski.
So I apologize. It sounds like for, for this option, you're selling density. Are you really selling, are you really preserving the use?
You would.
Selling 20 extra units can?
The condition, well.
Develop at that lower density.
Right. So that's where you would have, that would be one of the things you have to grapple with and decide. So for example, in the open space, you then sign a covenant that gets recorded against the property that says, we will use it for this use. So you could link the TDR to saying, and we want you to continue to use it at its current, you could either say the density or you could say the use.
Councilmember Smith.
You know, because there's, there's a few different ways that this could be used, you know, it would be, I think, really helpful, and it would be helpful for me, I feel like I understand it, but I, I go in and out of understanding it. And, and, and I think it would be, this would be one of those times where I, I feel like I'm going back to an economics textbook or something, and it would be nice to almost have an example?
Okay.
Of two properties and one of them being a mobile home park, and, and you actually take us through the exact process to the, the other site.
Okay.
And, and just, and lay it out in a more narrative format. I think it would be really helpful.
Happy to do that.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I guess one of my questions is the two units that are close to Samamish. My understanding is they're pretty close to their present density?
Correct.
I think it's R24.
Correct.
So they in fact wouldn't have much to sell, many TDRs to transfer, so they're giving up their right to develop without getting much benefit.
Right. So, and part of the argument is they're close to capacity now. But if you do see what, in the chart that we have that's up on the screen and it's in your packet, what we're suggesting you may want to consider if you're looking at this option, want to take it anywhere, is you may give them more than a one-to-one for that lost capacity because of the difference in land values per residential unit in each zone. So we were, our rough estimate was you might, if you wanted to use that approach, is you give them two and a half for every, you know, that they could sell into the receiving areas that are proposed for each unit that's lost, so that that way they're getting a little bit, they're getting a larger number.
Go ahead. Deputy Mayor.
When you were talking earlier about the city acting as a bank for units the way King County does, is that when King County goes and gets, says they want to preserve a property, are they doing that with a willing seller of development rights or is it more of a eminent domain sort of situation or how's that worked?
So there, in their TDR program, there is an eligible area and it's a willing, you know, it's a willing party. Whether or not, how that plays out in all the scenarios in front of you, that, you know, that could play itself out differently.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions on this subject?
Okay.
All right.
We're doing the two hardest things first, sorry.
Pardon?
We're doing the two hardest things first.
Yes.
So the second idea is fees in lieu. Now, fees in lieu are, this is a program that's almost, I've always seen it linked to affordable housing programs. So it's basically, the concept with fee in lieu is to say, you are supposed to build, and you mentioned your current codes, you know, you're going to add 30 bonus units and 10 of them were supposed to be affordable. Some of the cities have provisions saying, instead of giving us those 10 units for affordable housing on that property, you give us a certain amount of money, and you don't have to, but we are going to use that money to create affordable housing somewhere else. City of Redmond just rarely does it, but they just did it for the project you helped fund earlier this year. It's a large project right next to the overlay rail station where light rail is going to go. And, and that's because there was a site that was being purchased by a nonprofit that has 150 units of affordable housing. It needed like $10 million. And so they went to an adjacent property owner who had some requirement from the city, and the city, the builder said, I'll give you $4 million if I don't have to do those affordable units. The result was that allowed us to leverage county dollars, and so instead of getting 30 units on that site that would have been at 80% of median, we're getting, that money combined with others is now allowing 120 units that would be from 30 to 60% of median. So usually, when cities are doing in lieu, now in Seattle, that decision is up to the builder. You know, the city says you pay much, this much, and you, or you give us this many. In many of the cities in East King County that have affordable housing programs, they do have a provision to allow in lieu, but it's the city's decision, not the builder's decision. So the builder can make a proposal. Redmond's only accepted one in 20 years. In other words, they're saying, we want the units, but they said, hey, they, we got a special case here, so we'll take money here because we know how we want to use it. Okay? So that's the idea, is to allow someone to pay in exchange, in exchange for not doing onsite so that the city can create affordable housing some other way that they think is equal to or greater. Okay? So again, if you're going to do an in lieu program, you need to decide what areas you would give that choice to, or you would go to builders and maybe negotiate with them or however you want to set it up, where you could potentially allow a builder to do that. That could be the same area as we just described for TDR. In other words, you have a number of areas right now, the downtown residential, the downtown commercial, the regional business, and the TOD overlay that all have provisions to increase density in exchange for affordable housing. So you already have a number of places. As I just said a few minutes earlier, many builders, if you give them the choice, they will pick the money choice. So this is getting to your point, might this actually help in some respect? Builders often, it's done, they don't have to worry about the implementation and the monitoring and all these things, I say, are a lot of work over time. Plus, when they go to sell their property, they don't have a covenant on it like other properties do. So, so that is a program, it has a lot of experience. In other words, the building community is used to dealing with in lieu, that do housing development in centers. Just so that you're aware right now, Redmond, Kirkland, Bellevue, Issaquah, Mercer Islands, and Samamish all have programs in the areas that are similar to yours that require affordable housing. So this is, you're not by yourselves in having these kind of provisions. We have seen the market evolve at different times over the last 20 years in all those different market areas. So when we look at those, that area, there is the potential under your formulas for almost 1,000 affordable units, okay? So that's your pool potentially out there that you would be dipping into if you wanted to use an in lieu tool. So how much is the fee in lieu? There's two sides to that equation. The first is from the city point of view. Generally, the rule of thumb, and this is sort of stated in state legislation, you would set a number that you think would result in amount equal to or greater amount of affordability than you would have gotten onsite. And we often do that through a method of looking at costs versus revenue as an affordable unit and looking at gaps. So that's one approach. From the developer point of view, it's purely, simply a math kind of exercise for them. How much revenue, how much more revenue am I achieving by not having an affordable unit versus having an affordable unit? And what is the value of that to me? Okay, that's sort of how they look at it. If those two things can match up and are close enough, then you have the potential workings of a program. Our experience is, from looking at it, 75,000 per affordable unit is towards the low end, and we've seen some jurisdictions in King County whose numbers are significantly higher per affordable unit that builders are paying in order to have an in lieu provision. It's somewhat dependent on your affordability level they would otherwise have to provide and the market that they are in. Okay, those are factors that would affect it. So that's, gives you a sense of kind of the logistics of So that's, gives you a sense of kind of the logistics of in lieu fee. Now the question is, well, we may see if you have any questions on that and then we can talk about ways you might use that.
Well, we got a bunch of them here. Let's start with Councilmember Danuski.
So we have, you know, fairly small city with fairly few options that might take the fee in lieu option. I guess I'm worried that one or two people would take the fee in lieu option. We have like this small amount in the bank and we can't do anything with it. We can't actually build any affordable units. Is that a concern?
Well, you have a couple of ways of looking at it. One is that you could keep it in the bank and you, we're talking about one opportunity here tonight potentially. But that's one reason for even bringing this up. The other is you're part of a regional system. And so Kirkland, as part of their funding, in the last funding round, part of it was in lieu fees that they used. So they help contribute to the regional solution of affordable housing using some of their in lieu fees. Some cities like to keep their in lieu fees in their town. And if they do, then we'll work, you know, with your housing staff, we'll try to help you get projects along those lines. So it may be an issue, but there's, most of the cities, when they write their alternative compliance provisions, they'll say something like, our preference is to try to find a use of money in our city. However, we will consider other uses within the arch area, you know, in a broader geographic area. We'll consider that as well so that you at least leave that door open. So you can set some, the council can provide direction on how resources would be used.
Okay, thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
I feel like I must be missing something here. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how this directly ties in with mobile home park preservation. You know, if we have fees coming into the city, that's great for affordable housing. I, I think this is something that we should be looking at.
Right.
Possibly. And we do have it, I think, on that stretch on Juanita, if I remember correctly, in that little zone there. But how does this get, get to us, get to preserving the mobile home parks?
That's the slot in the next slot.
Okay. Well, then I'll skip that one, get to that in a second. My other question was, I mean mechanically, at least superficially, TDR and fee in lieu look kind of similar. Why then was there kind of a, it seems like there's a big price difference between, I mean, maybe I misheard something. Between fee in lieu at $75,000 and TDR at 30 to 40,000 dollars. What, what's the disparity there?
The reason for the difference is that TDR is a straight one-unit transaction. With an in lieu, for every affordable unit, you give them three market, you give them three extra units because of the cost of doing an affordable unit. So if you look at your code right now, it's every three bonus units, one's affordable. So that, in a really simple way, is to explain much of that difference.
That, that makes sense. I just missed that. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
So if I understand correctly, this, one of the differences is the TDR was for the present mobile home parks that we may choose to offer this program to. For the fee in lieu, it could be anybody who builds any housing units in the city, right?
Correct.
It wouldn't be limited to the smaller.
Well, that would be your decision. I mean, you can provide, like I said, some cities have said, we want to use it first in this. You know, you, that's further conversation for the, for the council.
But I mean, any residential development in the city.
Potentially, yes, you could do that.
That had any affordable requirement, we could say, aha.
Yes.
We, we can work with this.
Correct.
All right. And then, so if we ended up with some money in a pool that wasn't enough for us to build a huge something. We could coordinate with Arch because we have had Arch projects in our city and we didn't totally fund it with Kenmore money.
Correct.
We used other people's money.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I, also on the arch part of that, I would be, I would think that would make sense. Especially if we know we're not going to have a development for maybe many years that we wouldn't be able to use that money for.
And if I could speak to that real quickly, like I said, in, in Redmond, they controlled whether or not they would accept in lieu. And they only did it when they saw a linkage to something they wanted to get done. So I mean, you could make it relatively prescriptive. You don't have to say, if you do in lieu, you have to give it to every builder. You can say, builder, you can make a proposal to me, but we can still say no. And that's what I'm saying. In Redmond, builders have been asking for years to pay in lieu and the cities just said, no, we want the units. So you, you would have the control of how much it would be utilized. And you may decide, hey, it'd be nice to have a pool of funds in case something does come up, so maybe we should look at it more generally.
And the other aspect, so would you be able to tell us how they, how to calculate that formula? Like you said, there's this wide range of these fee in loos and, and just trying to understand. Because there's probably a lot of different variables that go into how you would do that. I would just, I would want it to be in such a manner that, I guess, so that it would be used very seldom. But at the same hand, not, you know, totally ridiculous. But just knowing that, I guess even from the simple fact that the private sector can do it a lot cheaper than a government agency right there. You know, what, what, what $1, you know, a private sector can do.
Right.
We can't take it that far.
That's exactly the argument we've used in Redmond for years as to why would we take your money versus making you build it.
Right.
But it's because we wanted to leverage something else.
Right.
They, the private can't access some other public fund source to do a special project. So we wanted the money. So, but you're right, and that's exactly the reason you may not use it universally. There's this kind of thing. But in general, you're correct. And that's, so some cities will say, we're gonna account for that in setting the number.
Okay. Thank you. And can I ask you one, I understand that, so, because this is a big point too, is when you said there is no covenant then on the, the property rights. So if they, if they pay the fee and you don't have that, that restriction. So do you also value that then? You give a value to the lack of a covenant?
That, that's what I was saying earlier, is that, that's why the number could be 75,000 or more.
Okay.
Because that property doesn't have that restriction. So can I move on to then? How would this maybe help with some of the options? Okay, so as I mentioned, under, if you're using an in lieu fee as an alternative to providing affordable housing. State law says you're supposed to use it for affordable housing, explicit affordable housing. And state law says with a covenant, with long-term affordability. So if you're going to use this money, it has to transfer and be used in ways where there's explicit affordability linkages. So we think there's several ways that could work its way into the options you have or wrinkles on your options. First, most obviously is option two. That's where you're saying, get it in the hands of like a nonprofit who buys the park from, or the homeowners. But more likely in this scenario, a nonprofit who operate it, but is going to operate it not only as manufactured housing. But at, in a set rent level with set increases in what the rents can be. We have done that through Arch. We helped a group by community in the city of Redmond many years ago. That was going to be redeveloped in an area with townhomes. And so very similar circumstances that you may see here. And it was a willing transaction between the two parties, but they needed to not only buy the park. But they also needed to do some infrastructure improvements. And so in that example, the money came from the cities as well as from King County and the state of Washington, other public funding sources. And so the combination of those, and they were made, those funds were then given to that agency as a loan. And they've been repaying that money for the last 20 years. In fact, I think they pay off the loan next year. That, at least the city's portion, I don't know if the state did a loan, but we did. And I think it gets paid off next year. And they've maintained the property in its current use and they have a process for setting rents based on just covering costs, et cetera, things like that. We have covenants on the property and it's owned by a nonprofit organization. Housing Authority has also bought some parks and they are another kind of player there. But then you might even be able to do this if like the owners created a nonprofit or something like that too, if they wanted to do something along those lines. So that's the most explicit way. You have a fund source, they're gonna have a gap. And you help fill that gap through a loan or, or a secured grant of some form. So that's the most obvious way. Another way you could do it, you could do the same thing with the existing owner. Say, okay, we will give you some money for you to fix up the place and keep it affordable. So it's not to preserve the use, you're also going to layer on an affordability covenant. So there would probably be some decrease in the rents or some tiering of the rents. That's what we did in the one in Redmond. There's three tiers of rents and it's based on household income. So they have a income level for the rent, if the income's under 50%, if it's under 80%, and then a market level. And there's different, they have a certain mix of properties to try to get those different tiers of rent levels. So you could do that with an existing owner if they were willing to go into an agreement. We have done that to preserve federally assisted housing. We made a deal with a private owner. And that, and that deal is not only, and not only was it a deal to restrict their use, but we also made a deal with them. And that might be something you do where they agreed they would sell it to a nonprofit when they were ready to move on. So that, at an agreed formula price, kind of thing. So anyway, so those are, that's a wrinkle on that, two different wrinkles of the most obvious ways to use an in lieu fee. The other is you might be able to, and we'd have to research this a little bit more. Could you use in lieu fees for relocation assistance? If you did, it would have to be, we know it would have to be income-qualified residents. You couldn't give it to all the residents. You could help potentially use it for some. And we need to research that a little bit more to see whether or not that would be allowed. But that's another potential use you could use for in lieu. Obviously not as probably big a cash one. But it might be something that would help in a relocation scenario. And that, if you're interested in that, we will research that more, more carefully. So those are some of the ways we could think of to use in lieu fees.
Councilmember Danuski.
So it sounds like to get this program to work would take time because you gotta have somebody in the TOD or whatever who wants to sell their units. Or.
Right.
To put into this, so that's not gonna help things quickly, be more of a long-term.
Right, but this is one, this one logistically, in, in some respects is, you may be right. There may be, someone doesn't want to do it for a while. You may also sort of say, well, it's here today and it may not be here tomorrow, you know, so if you want to do it, let's make the deal now. Or you got two or three years, so you might do something like that. But the other thing is, if you have the money, you know, you'd say, okay, we, we, we're interested in this idea. And you have a builder who wants to purchase, you know, some in lieu credits, you know, who wants to do a development, you'd have the money. You could sit on it and if this option, you could sit on it for a while and if it's never gonna happen, then you could spend it on other affordable housing. You know, but, so logistically, I would say this is a little more straightforward than the TDR one. But yes, you're right. It may be several, it could be some time before you actually make that transaction occur.
Thanks.
I might just put one comment in here, which is that when we were talking with the property owners of the mobile home parks. The length of time that they anticipated preserving the parks varied greatly. There were some who were interested in a more immediate sale, but there were others who said, we may be wanting to do something, but it might not be for 10 or 15 years. So there is sort of a longer time horizon for some of the parks.
Councilmember Curtis.
I think I've almost grasped the concept, but I want to clarify. So it seems like with the in lieu, the, in essence, receivers, even though I'm mixing the two terms. They provide the money first and then we have to save it until we find a use for it. Whereas the TDR, it's the people who want to use their TDR credits. They're asking to get paid upfront.
Potential, yes.
And there's not necessarily anybody willing to do that yet.
At one level, it could, yeah, unless you have a property owner in a certain circumstance. But in general, I would say that's more in the case, yes.
Councilmember Smith.
So on the option two here with the assist the party to acquire. So when, if you had the money and you, you went and, and so you bought, I assume, let's say, a mobile home park with that. Then is that in perpetuity, that, that's what it would be? Or how do you, how do you then reconcile that maybe, you know, over time and as land becomes more valuable? That the highest and best use really may be to deal with affordability at a much more denser rate than what it is? Do you, do you, do you see a sunset on something like that ever?
So, I'm old. I helped finance some properties 25 years ago that are asking that exact question now. So, and they're sitting down with the funders. And they may be changing that property. Now, this is more complicated because it's manufactured housing. But we are looking at some property where Bellevue is even looking at rezoning it so they, that will facilitate exactly what you're saying. And their intention is to redevelop it and to get a lot more housing. And that is, you'll be at that table deciding if that's the right thing to do because you will be a funding source with a covenant. But it's your covenant, so you have the right as the issuer of that covenant to modify it. And so we have on occasion seen affordable housing developments morph in one way or another over time. But that puts you at that table and you have a controlling interest in that decision.
Okay. And then do the, if, if it's run by a nonprofit, then do they rent, when they're doing a lease on a pad like that? Is it just done like they would, do they go through a similar process as if they were doing, you know, any other dwelling unit lease? For affordable housing?
So what complicates a manufactured home is we have to try to account that there's two housing expenses that are being incurred by each individual. One is what the homeowner is directly incurring for their unit. And then the second is the rent or being a member of that community. And so in doing so, we try to account for, in the covenant process, how do you account for that? So they don't get the same limits as we would get for a straight rental property.
And so then you also have to account for the value of that house too. So if they, I assume if they were going to sell it, or I, I guess they don't, they're not gonna own the house.
Right.
This is what gets, it, I understand this concept, but I see, it seems like it's really hard with the fact that you have two different aspects. You have ownership.
Right.
But you also have a lease on each one of these individual.
And so that's why I wanted to make sure I emphasized the Avon Villa property in Redmond, because we did that 20 years ago. And it seems to be functioning.
And that seems, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All the same issues you're describing.
And so if, if, okay, never mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Chris.
So kind of related to that question, the ownership portion of that is for a depreciating asset. Does it ever go to zero? So mobile homes don't keep their value at the same value as this, you know, regular stick house.
I'll ask you the same question about your house.
My house?
Yeah.
The average house, you know, 200, 200 years from now, you just remodel it.
Okay.
Yeah, you just keep it fixed up and good repair.
Okay.
So that can, the same thing can happen with a mobile home?
You answer, yeah, that's, it's no different than any other home.
Okay.
You don't take care of it? Yeah, depreciates if you do. I always tell the story about the 200-plus-year-old house that I was raised in and was sold for well over half a million dollars 20 years ago. It didn't depreciate, I don't think, because it was maintained.
Okay, so I actually have a comment on that. I mean, because I, that's what I do. I mean, my business is appraising real estate. And so, and, and we do show though that a stick-built, conventional wood frame home does appreciate at a higher rate than you would a manufactured home. Which typically was constructed with a, a, an economic life term. And so it is a little different. And, and you know, when you're dealing with, you know, more units that you, you're actually, the manufacturing. Oftentimes, you can't just take apart a unit without taking apart an entire unit in many other ways. Because, you know, the skin isn't just oftentimes just a skin like wood lap siding or something. And so, so I, I do think it's a valid question trying to understand, is there an economic life to those homes?
And, and all, and what I think I'm trying to say is, is that it varies significantly. And part of like, one's nice thing about having like the nonprofit ownership is they understand that concept and they work with homeowners. There are loans that people can get to fix up their homes and from time to time, they replace homes. So, you know, and that's something the mark, you see in the private you, properties here. From time to time, they replace a home, kind of thing. And that same dynamic would occur potentially in a nonprofit, you know, in the, in the other ownership structures as well. But I think what we've also learned is if you do maintain it, they can, especially with, you know, over time. The units made in the more recent decades are clearly built differently than ones built previous to that.
All right.
Okay.
Next one.
Okay, so now one of the issues that we were hearing a lot when we were talking with the property owners in particular were how could we help reduce operating costs? And if, and, and even to some degree, some level of willingness that if they, if we could or that was done somehow pass that savings. You know, make it more stable for the, for the homeowners. And so what we did is we kind of looked at the major third-party expenses they have, which are utilities and property taxes. And so we did some research on surface water, because these are the ones that they raised. Those are the ones that they're primarily paying, which is water and sewer and surface water management. Those are the ones that go with the land and those are the ones that they're typically paying. And then we also noticed that the city has some utility taxes for those. Our research in the end indicated that when we tried to go apples to apples, they are assessed differently than homes. And so there was some implication that maybe they were paying a higher. And so there was some implication that maybe they were paying a higher rate. It doesn't really look that way. It looks like that probably most parks, the mobile homes are paying about the same as townhomes. So it didn't seem like the rates were out of skew, that somehow, when you translated how they paid versus homeowners. So that was what we found there. With property taxes, there's two forms of property taxes paid. One is by the landowner and one is by the homeowner. The homeowners are eligible, especially if they're seniors, they can get the senior rate if they're income-eligible. And we found that about 25 households in the manufactured home communities in your community are accessing that program. That saves them approximately, I think about a third or more, I think it's like 40% on their property taxes, if they qualify for that. When we looked, so we thought, hmm, what might be available for the land? And this would require legislation, but a similar thought was, well, should the property taxes on the land be affected if the resident is eligible? Because when you get it as a homeowner, you get not just the improvements, you get the land and the improvements. But, so maybe if there was legislation, and I'm sure the legislation would require a pass-through to the homeowner. And our guess was, from looking at the assessments of parks in your community and looking at the senior, you know, the rates for the levy rate, that you might say seniors about 30, eligible seniors about $35 a month. If something was enacted legislatively, that might allow something like that to be done. Where the landowner gets the discount in exchange for reducing the pad rent. So that's what we could find there. The other was, there was some mention of different city fees. When they replace a home, it's about just under $1,000. They say that sometimes, in some communities, they've been asked, if they don't transfer the new unit on soon enough, that they sometimes get assessed the impact fees, like that it's a new unit. And so they were like saying, it would be nice to have clarification on that front, that as long as you're not increasing your net number of units over time, that you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be faced with impact fees. And then we were looking for sources of loans for doing repairs to the property or the land. The King County home repair program is potentially eligible to homeowners, so that helps address some of the questions you raised. We didn't, the county does not have something comparable to that for landowners, so we did not find a cheap funding source for infrastructure. So we didn't find many things in conclusion in this area that could be done, but this is what we were able to dig up from there. And then, oh, the city, utility taxes are probably in the ballpark of $4 a month per homeowner, is what we were estimating based on looking at some utility rates, et cetera. So not a very significant number, per se. So that's what we were able to find out on that front. Any questions on those?
Councilmember Smith.
I think I find this, though, the least appealing, and the reason is, is because it seems like these are benefits that, if we're going to give them to the, or provide them or work towards them for the benefit of the, the park residents, that it seems like we should be providing it for a lot of other citizens that are in affordable housing situations.
And I guess I would comment, the one area where that might be true already is with the seniors, you know, on the, on the land property taxes. But I, your point on the other elements.
Yeah, and, and to discount, to pass through a tax, I mean, if that could legislatively be completed, it does seem like, even if it's a pass-through from the owner to the resident, still the landlord still has the ability to rewrite his lease in whatever amount he wants. And if he knows he's just, or she's just passed through $35 a month, there's nothing to prevent that landlord then from saying, well, I'm going to rewrite it next lease at $35 more a month higher.
Mm-hmm. Good.
Councilmember Marshall.
And the city of Kenmore wouldn't have any say over the water and sewer because that's a nursery utility district, so at least that option wouldn't be there.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I question, without these being tied directly to ongoing affordability, I really question whether the owners would, what the incentive would be for the owners to actually pass the savings on rather than just increase their profits. So I'm a little skeptical of this slide, but thank you.
Yeah, can we get the lights up a little bit? It's getting a little dark in here. Any chance doing something with the temperature? It's getting a little cold.
Too cold? Really?
That is true. Any other questions on this one?
Okay. All right. We're coming down the home stretch here. Relocation assistance. So this is a tricky one, and that is because during, you heard the comments during the public testimony, you heard a variety of different ways in which homeowners felt they would be impacted if their communities were closed and they were, they had to move. Many of them saying it would be difficult, if not impossible, to move their homes. And we looked online to see what manufactured homes are selling for in North King County, and it ranged anywhere from $20,000 to over $100,000 per home. So you have a huge range of what these owners are able to currently sell their homes for when they move in the current communities. The second area that we heard about was relocation costs. We have to move. We have to pay first, if it's moving into a rental now, you know, because we can't move our unit, then we have first in months, then we have to move, and we have the physical costs of moving, et cetera, and things along, and we may have to dispose of, you know, we may have to pay a discharge, you know, who's responsible for getting rid of the unit, and if it falls on us, then what do we do there? So that's a second area of cost. And then the third is, they're paying 600 plus whatever their home expense is, and on the market, rents are a lot higher than that, or whatever. So there's a big rent gap, and it could be 200, it could be $700 or more a month. And is there some time period of a rent supplement, even if there's replacement housing, that they can't move into right away or something? So those are three areas that all potentially have relatively significant costs. Then you'd have to, and then you're going to have all different combinations of factors. So then you're probably going to need to set up a system that says, do you give a flat number, or do you have a range of numbers depending upon? And if it's the latter, then it's what depending upon means. It might mean income limitation, especially if city funds are used, and you are probably going to be capped at no more than 80% of median income. You might choose a lower level, but that's probably the highest level you could assist someone at. So you might depend on your income level you might look at. You might look at how large the household is. You might want to look at the unit size. You might want to look at the condition of the unit. So there's a number of factors that you would, either you would probably set a number that you sort of felt like everybody met that bar, so you could set a number that way, or you could try to get a more complicated approach that tries to look into a variety of factors. In the federal, if you do rental housing where you're displacing people, so these people don't own their homes, if you're using federal funds, the amount of relocation assistance can be $10,000 per household, because it's based on trying to find rent supplement and moving costs for a period of time. And that number can easily exceed $10,000. If there is no federal funding involved and we use local funding, we sort of have a flat number of around 20, it's now, I think, about $2,500, $2,600 per household for relocation assistance. And that's a flat number, and that's just sort of a minimum, that's sort of a minimum number that we look at. But that's just for rental housing. That's not this kind of circumstance. So that gives you an idea of what the magnitude of these numbers can easily be. So there are a couple of different potential funding sources in which the funding isn't all just city resources. The first is, and you've heard this reference, I think, in some of the testimony, I know the commission did, is there is a state legislatively created fund, and it's important to understand, that fund is not funded by property owners, it's funded by the homeowners through sales of units, and it's also been supplemented by legislative budget authority. There, residents can receive for a single, it's not person, that's a wide, you know, single wide unit, set up to $7,500, and for a double wide, up to $12,000. But it's only for relocation costs. So if your unit can't be moved right now, you're really not going to get any assistance or very limited. There was a run at some legislation that would expand, not the number, but it would expand the things that you can use that for. And I know when we talked to the state staff who administer this fund, I think they said there was going to maybe be an attempt to make another run at that. Now, what that legislation also currently says is, if there's local funds coming in, then the amount of local, then they're going to reduce the state fund allocation. So there is, there's a little quid pro quo that goes on if somebody else helps fund a household. And maybe if you fund other, that's where it gets a little more complicated. So if you fund, like, rental supplement, then maybe the moving costs are covered by the state and you cover another piece. So that fund is currently full enough, you know, if the funds aren't, you know, it's also dependent on funds being there. Staff has told us, funds generally are there at this time, but it's also because it has very limited uses it could be used for. If the legislation passes, that opens it up, then maybe that's going to put more stress on that, that fund balance. The other is not explicitly for manufactured housing, but I believe you can link it to manufact, you can also look at it as a manufactured housing tool, and that is, it's a redevelopment assistance. If you redevelop property in which low-income residents are there, you, the city, can require the developer to provide up to, there can be a program to give eligible, income-eligible residents up to $2,400. However, 50% of whatever you set the number at must come from a city resource, not from the developer. So it has to be a 50/50 match of developer funds and city funds. So whatever your appetite is, up to 1,200, right? The total of the combined, it maxes out at $2,400. So those are two things in which you're potentially leveraging other sources, and then obviously there would be city resources for others.
Councilmember Marshall.
So if the home cannot be moved, you're not eligible for 5921?
Essentially, that's my understanding.
And why can't you move the home again? What are the reasons?
Because of age is the primary reason, more times than not, and the condition of the unit, right?
As, and it's as, as to whether you can move it as determined by the, the park owner?
No, it's more the matter of law and the codes related to the building, et cetera.
Law, okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Curtis.
So this is one I struggled with, actually, a little more than some of the others. I'm having a hard time figuring out the difference between anybody who is income-challenged and needs an affordable place to live, and people are specifically in mobile home parks. So if anybody has to move for whatever reason, do we give them relocation expenses, moving costs, deposits for first and last month rent, and all those other things? And I don't think that's our job.
So you, I don't think you can, with your money, you would have to meet some income test because it's public resources.
But we're still not, so there are a lot of people that might qualify in that scenario. So, so I'm, it just feels like, if we open the door to, we're going to do it for people in mobile home parks, to be fair, we need to do, everybody who's at 50% or 30% or whatever we choose for an income level. To me, it feels, why are we giving money to one group of people but not other people who really feel very much in the same condition?
So that's where, if you had that concern, in looking at this, you would, like I said, we said there's, I get back to the previous slide. Two of the three are unique to manufactured homeowners. So you, and as I said, that third one is something you could potentially do for, yeah, it's not, it wasn't designed explicitly for manufactured housing. You're sort of squeezing or trying to squeeze a manufactured housing scenario to one that was meant for more typical residential redevelopment.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schreven.
Well, I think that, I think the difference is that mobile home park residents are owners of their homes, which is different than the rental, the pure rental situation. And as a couple of you pointed out, whether or not the value of that home goes to zero at some point, it does not appreciate certainly at the same rate. So these folks are in a particularly tenuous position. They're owners of their homes that are not necessarily appreciating, they're renting their pad, which is the rent's going up. At some point, they can't move their home. This is, it's very, very difficult, and it isn't, I don't think it's equivalent to someone who's renting an apartment. I really appreciate how you've laid out these options. I'm still trying to wrap my head around a couple of them. I think I'm getting them. And I do want to, I think we did ask, and maybe it'll come up next week, to hear a little bit more about the overlay option. I, I don't know whether we're talking about that tonight, but, okay, if we're not, then, then I think we, we did ask to do that.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Oh, Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I know, one of the restrictions on, that came up on the, on the moving of them, because I believe the manufacturers don't, also don't guarantee after a certain age to, for some of them, I don't know what, what the age is, but I know that you can't do it, and oftentimes, their banks won't lend on them, too, if they've been moved at a certain point. But I do, I wanted to ask you, like, I had pulled up three, I know there was three sales in Kenmore within the last year that I saw, and they were two at 75 and one at, at about $60,000. And on these leases, does the park owner then, when a new buyer comes in and buys one of these, does the park owner have a, basically, the ability to say yea or nay on that new buyer of that mobile home?
I'd want to double-check with other people before answering that.
Okay. Because that's a, to me, that's a really a critical part of the component, because if, if somebody found a buyer for their home, you know, you might not, you might only have a buyer come by every three months, and if that person could not be approved on the, from the, the park owner, then clearly that diminishes the value of the home. And, and it could be done in a, I mean, I see, there's a lot of negative angles to look at that. So the other thing is, do you know, I know, I know that the RCW has lease requirements that says, in the lease, that it specifically outlines very clearly that this park can be sold, can be developed, and, I mean, there's no, it's, it's pretty apparent when you read the RCW about it, and I've even read the actual lease page where it's, it's been drawn out. And so, so I bring that up because I think it would be irresponsible for us to also not acknowledge that there is some responsibility on the designer of that lease. I realize they're buying the home, but when you're leasing that property, it's also saying, you know, pretty clearly that it can be developed. But what I'd like to know is there, has there ever been discussion about requiring a longer lease term? So, so specifically, to me, that would be something that would make, I think, a lot more sense if, you know, if you're working towards a legislative angle, is that you look at it and you say, well, maybe, you know, you require a five-year lease or, or something that, that has very, you know, or three years at least, but it makes it a little clearer so there's a little more planning that can go into it. And I was just wondering if that's ever been talked about.
We'll also check with the same group of people who, I suspect, have probed on that idea, and I'm sure there's been lots of discussion at the state level about that. So we'll get information on that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
So two questions. When I was comparing people who might be forced to leave the mobile home park, I was thinking of them more compared to a foreclosure situation, not a rental. So people are going to lose their homes, and every week on Friday at King County and Sohamish County are people who are losing their homes because of foreclosure, and we don't go save them. So that, that's the comparison I was making. There are people who are in situations where they're going to lose their house. I'm not, I wasn't referring to renters.
So I would just make some distinctions there.
Okay.
In a foreclosure, you borrowed money and you're not repaying it, and the bank only has right to what they loaned you, and any proceeds above and beyond that go back to you. So you received funds, and you're not paying those back, and if the house sold for more, for whatever reason, more than that, it would go back to the homeowner, and the bank doesn't keep the extra here. So you received funds and you're not paying those back, and if the house sold for more, for whatever reason, more than that, it would go back to the homeowner, and the bank doesn't keep the extra here, there's just no value because it's being, it can't be moved and redeveloped. So it's a little bit different, I think, circumstance.
And the second question, kind of related to that, on the one hand, if you keep maintaining it, it, it has useful life, but yet if it's older than, I think it was 1976, and in fact, somehow doesn't have the same useful life because it can't be moved, even if you've maintained it well.
Correct.
There's something that happens that makes the value precipitously decrease.
Right, so that's prob, right, right.
Okay.
Councilmember Marshall.
Councilmember Shrubnik to ask my question.
Okay. That's it?
That's just lots for you to think about, and we're, help feed information to you for next week, and we'll be here to help you continue your conversation.
So one of the concerns, and this guy has the, that's relocation assistance, one of the concerns I have, and I don't know how it would be addressed, is in the senior parks, the fact that so many are on fixed incomes, and the rents continued, and we're seeing that certainly in the apartment community in, in the region, but their, their rents just continue to go up and up. They can't move their homes, and, you know, anything be done?
Well, that's, again, that's where option two, where you not only preserve the use, but you're preserving some of the affordability as well. So that's the intent.
But that doesn't keep the rents from continuing to go up every month?
No, but they're based more on changes in median income and things along those lines, and you might have tiered, you know, like I say, the park, they look at the income of the residents, and they set the rents lower for some who can't, you know, so they are able to adjust their rents that way better. But it's not a complete answer. I mean, yes, it doesn't make a perfect answer, but it's clearly a much more stable situation. And so if there's any other, yeah, I would just sort of throw, if there's, aside from the questions you've asked, knowing what your conversation's going to be next week, if you have any other, like, oh, if you could come back with some other information that would also be helpful to you.
Councilmember Curtis.
So last week, so I don't think right now is the time to answer, but last week I asked the question, could we do a comparison with Bothell? So they, and they, about 20 years ago, created the special zone, and then where in Bothell those are located, and it could be next week's discussion.
Right, it's, it's, that information, quite a bit of it is in the packet for next week's meeting. There's a map showing where the mobile home park zones are, and information about whether they're in downtown or not, the number of units.
I assume it'd be next week's discussion, not this week's.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I do have one more. I'm sorry. Six months or a year ago, I thought this was a totally unsolvable problem. I'm actu- absolutely impressed with the work that the Planning Commission and our staff and with your help. You've actually produced some options that seem viable. I honestly didn't think there was any solution except take a bunch of ton of money and give it to people. So, so I'm actually excited that you guys have given us some options, and this has been a lot of work, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you all very much. There's a lot of options, but there's no easy answer. All right.
When is the next meeting?
Our, our council meetings are every Monday, so, all right. Next item on the agenda is property acquisition, Mr. Carleton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last month, you authorized me to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the potential acquisition of the property located at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street here in Kenmore, for the possible use of a public works facility at that site. So we entered into that purchase and sale agreement. We're in a 90-day feasibility period right now where, where, where we have the opportunity to investigate the property, to communicate with the neighbors. And so as a result, we did send out a letter to the adjacent neighbors, letting them know what we're up to. And in response, the neighbors have been very vocal, vocal in their opposition to purchasing the property for the purpose of a public works site. So given the neighborhood response, I'm recommending that the city no longer consider purchasing the property for the purpose of a public works facility. However, I do recommend that we continue in the 90-day feasibility period because we still may wish to purchase the property for open space purposes, where it can be used as an offset, where we activate or convert open space elsewhere in the city. We may wish, wish to purchase the property, hold it for a while, determine our future needs, including open space needs, and then we could sell all or a portion of the property back to the private sector for residential uses. Or given what we find out during this 90, 90-day feasibility period, we could not purchase the property at all. We're still in this 90-day period, like I said, and that 90-day period will end, end in about mid-September, so we still have some time to kind of kick the tires, so to speak, on the property to see if it's suitable for our needs. But my recommendation to you is, as shown in the proposed council action and motion, which would be to amend the City Council June 11th, 2018 direction to the city manager as follows. Authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the city of Kenmore to potentially acquire the property at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street in Kenmore for potential open space purposes and not for a public works facility.
So, questions, discussion? Councilmember Danuski.
So you say potential open space purposes, but then one of the options is to sell it back to the private sector, so that seems contradictory.
So we would hold it and assess, let's say the 90-day period came and went, and we closed on the property, we could hold it for a while, determine our needs, and then sell it back.
Okay, so that wouldn't be potential open, that wouldn't be open space purposes? That would be?
No, but we would be buying it for the purpose of open space purposes, but I just want to make sure it's clear to the public that the city reserves the right to sell it back to the private sector whenever they want, whenever the city chooses.
Okay.
Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Marshall.
Or private, did I say public sector? I meant to say private.
Pardon?
I meant to say the city wants, the city should have the right to be able to sell it back to the private sector under the conditional, or under the, the current residential uses.
Councilmember Curtis, I mean, yeah, Councilmember Curtis.
So I guess my concern is that Lake Forest Park has notified us that their plan, as of December 31, is to not provide public works as it's been provided in the past. So in the next six months, we need to get creative and do something. And what I had hoped was that we would look around our fine city, find some options, and have some public input, and find the best place. My guess is no matter what place we pick, there will be some public that are against it, but we need a public works location. So rather than boxing ourselves in and says, this will not be used for a public works facility, I don't, I don't think, if we can find a better place, I'm happy to have the best place, and I'd love to have the public input in helping us find the best place. Ultimately, we, you know, the city has to, it has to be big enough and all the other requirements that we've added to it. But I don't know if there is any other better place than this. If there is, I'd surely take it. I wouldn't choose an R1 residential area as our public works if there is a better place. But if there is no place, and we have six months to be thinking about this, and we might be able to get extensions and all kinds of other workarounds, but ultimately, we're a big enough city now, we need our own public works, location and staff and function. And Lake Forest Park has notified us that we have a time course to kind of do that. So I guess my, my concern with this is by very specifically eliminating that one, you know, what happens if we don't find any other place that's any better?
So we do have some time. We have bought ourselves some time. The deadline is not December 31st. We have the, the interim site there on, what we call the old shell property there in front of the library that we can use. Also, the back of the post office can serve as some of the office space, and although not ideal, that's in a commercial area without residential opposition, and we can exist there and get along for a couple of years and, and buy ourselves some time and look at other options, including more suitable options in the commercial areas of the city. So we're not under the gun, we're not backed into a corner to, to have a site acquired by December 31st because of our interim location.
Councilmember Marshall.
So, and on that note, I would urge that we examine potential rental of properties, perhaps of the North Shore Utility District, perhaps the North Shore Fire District, or other rental properties. But as to this motion, the question then would be, is the, if, if it were passed, would the direction then be to seek to purchase this property at a drastically reduced price?
So, no, we'd still, well, it depends on what we find during the investigation of the property. We can ask for price reductions depending on what is found during the environmental assessments and, and other investigation that we do. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
I wasn't particularly in favor of this, to begin with, this purchase, and I'm still not in favor of purchasing it unless we know the, what we're going to use it for. And unless we know that, and I guess, I, I, I'm not clear what our open space requirements exactly are. With the redevelopment of Squires, I know there are going to be open space mitigation requirements. I'm not clear what they are, and I, it sounds like maybe that's something that you're going to explore, but I certainly wouldn't want to be, I'm not in favor of retaining it any longer than absolutely necessary to determine that one thing, and not in favor of purchasing it so that we could sell it at some point and be in the business of property acquisition and sale. I, I just, that's, I don't want to be in that unless we absolutely have to.
Can I address that?
Sure.
So we're, working with the State Recreation and Conservation Office, and we're going to be meeting with them later this month to get a stronger sense from them on whether this property would work for open space credit. So, and, and the timing works well because we are in that feasibility period, and so based on what we learned from the state can definitely affect the decision whether to acquire the property and whether it would work for the walkways and waterways project at Squires Landing, or whether it would work for converting open space elsewhere in the city for a public works facility. That, that meeting that we're going to have with the RCO, Recreation and Conservation Office with the state, is going to tell us a lot and inform us on whether or not to move forward with this property. And of course, we're going to come back and report to you before the feasibility period ends, and, and then make a recommendation to you on that.
And we still have the, the final say on whether we proceed with the purchase or not at that time?
Yeah, it's at our sole discretion, according to the purchase and sale agreement.
So council has that final say.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any further questions? So the chair then would entertain a motion to, oh, Councilmember Danuski.
So Rob actually answered most of mine. So I'm in the, kind of the same boat as Councilmember Shrubnik, where I didn't approve of purchasing this property, and I wouldn't agree to purchase it unless we knew for sure or fairly certain that we needed it for open space. When you're looking at that open space, if, you could also look at the other areas we were going to purchase possibly for open space and price difference and things like that as well.
For sure, mm-hmm.
So I guess as far as this goes, I guess grudgingly I would support it because it does take at least the public works facility out of the purchase and sale, knowing that we would be coming back later to determine if we're purchasing it.
All right, any other questions? So the chair then would entertain a motion to amend the, the direction to the city manager as follows, to authorize the city manager enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the city of the Kenmore, of Kenmore to potentially acquire the property located at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street in Kenmore for potential open space purposes and not for a public works facility. Are you going to second that? I'm, I'm looking for a second. If there is no second, the motion dies. No, they're going to make the motion, I'm waiting for that one. So nobody's going to make the motion, so if there's no motion, the motion dies. There is no motion. All right, Councilmember Smith.
I would like to make that motion, but also include, right, for private development of purchases, it's very possible that some or all may. Yeah, so I would want that added to the motion.
Would that be appropriate to add to the motion, or at the time when we've authorized the final purchase and sale?
Well, Councilmember Smith recent, said it better than I was trying to say it in the second bullet, but that's basically what I was trying to say in the second bullet about purchasing the property and determine our open space needs, and then sell all or a portion back to the prop, the private sector. Because some of the property may work for open space purposes, some of it might not, and we would need to be able to have the ability to dispose of the part that doesn't and get, send it back to the private sector for residential development.
So then how do we incorporate that into the motion?
Say.
City Attorney?
Raising.
He's hiding in the background.
Oh, there he is.
Try not to walk up your volume.
That's okay.
Well, I think you could just add on, and, and with the ability to, yeah, dispose of residual back to the private sector.
Maybe we could have our temporary city clerk read to us what she thinks the motion is.
Right.
It was a little confusing to me what the motion started out as.
So what was that?
It's the written one.
What was that last thing that was said?
Oh, it's to what, in writing?
Yeah, we didn't get it.
Yeah, okay.
There's no motion actually.
There's, yeah.
So Councilmember Smith could word the motion right now and do it.
Yeah, personally, I just, you know, I don't have, I've got a lot of stuff working right now, so.
Okay, so then, chair would entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into the purchase and sale agreement for the city of Kenmore to potentially acquire the property located at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street for potential open space purposes and not for public works, with the option to dispose of any residual.
Back to the private sector.
Back to the private sector. Does anybody want to make that motion? Move Dan second it, okay. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm a little confused about why we need any of these motions. Is there a restriction on what we can do with it right now in the agreement that we have?
No, but I think this particular motion is for the neighborhood's benefit. I think they would appreciate the peace of mind, knowing that we're not acquiring it for a public works facility.
Any further questions? Councilmember Marshall.
Question, I thought that the- Question, I thought that the, that the city manager had determined that we were not going to pursue purchase of the property, of the case?
And that's not what I'm recommending, I'm recommending that we still stay in this 90-day period, but that we change the reason for purchasing this property from the purpose of a public works facility to that of open space, with the ability to dispose of it back to the private sector as we see fit.
Is the purchase and sale agreement, as was approved before against my vote, is that still in effect?
Yes, it is, and it would still be in effect.
Unless we brought a motion to kill it, perhaps, tonight.
Yeah, and you can do that tonight, too.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I'll just speak for it, and part of it is because we are under contract, so unless it is killed, there's no, we don't, we don't even have to do this, but I do think it makes sense based on the discussion we've had tonight, and we've already, the feasibility process is already underway, we've engaged, I believe, an appraiser and somebody for environmental review, so it makes sense to at least go through that while the city manager is working on trying to understand what the trade-offs are in the land and conservation easement if we have to work with the Squires Landing site. And so, I, to me, you know, it's, I don't think it's going to really cost us much of anything more to see the process through, and we're going to have a lot more information a month and a half from now than we have today.
Councilmember Curtis.
So, I would just speak to supporting this motion as it's been rewritten, just to give us more flexibility, since we really don't know where our public works will be located, to have the flexibility of this open space that might be useful or it might not be, but this gives us total flexibility on, we could just sell the whole thing off if we decide it's, our public works place won't need this kind of benefit. So, I would say we should proceed this way with that addition we've made.
Just to be clear, so, just if I can reiterate what you just said, so, if we determine, if we purchase a public works facility, for example, on 175th Street in a commercial area, and we don't need an open space offset, then we can just sell the whole property back to the private sector and, and not have to keep any of it for open space, and you want that kind of flexibility.
It feels like we've, we've built that flexibility in.
Yeah.
If we need it for open space for any reason, it doesn't say what reason the open space is.
Yeah.
It could be for public works, it could be for Squires Landing mitigation, so we aren't stating what it has to be for.
Yeah.
So, I think we've left ourselves all flexibility.
But we are stating that it's not for public works.
Correct, correct, but the open space use, we haven't said if it'll be to offset some public works facility somewhere else, or for Squires Landing mitigation, or anything else where we need open space to be mitigated.
Yep.
So, we've left ourselves a lot of flexibility, I think.
All right, Councilmember Marshall.
Yeah, I think that in terms of fiscal responsibility, we'd be better served by looking at a variety of properties to serve the conservation need, as opposed to having gone into this one under a public works analysis upfront in rather short order. Also, I think it behooves us to be more fiscally responsible to take a look at that inventory. I also don't believe in the city being a developer. Thank you.
All right, any further questions? So, the motion in front of us then is to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the city of Kenmore to potentially acquire the property located at 6646 Northeast 202nd Street in Kenmore for potential open space purposes and not for a public works facility, and to be able to dispose of any residual property back to the private sector. The clerk, please take the roll. A second. Yes.
Smith, yes. Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
No.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Motion passes six one. All right, next item on the agenda is Willamette Dental Benefit Options. Ms. Gregory.
Mic on? And council members, thank you. I'd like to present to you tonight a request to add a new dental plan to the city's employee benefit lineup. Willamette Dental, through the AWC Employee Benefit Trust, has been found to be a really great and affordable option for families needing orthodontic or other major dental services. So, the city currently provides a Delta Dental Plan for all employees and most dependents, which offers really a great variety of dentists and very good benefits. However, there is a annual cap on dental costs of $1,500 per covered individual and a $2,000 total lifetime cap on orthodontia services per covered individual. The advantage to this Willamette plan is that there is no cap or dollar limit for covering orthodontia services beyond a $1,000 copay for the person receiving the services. The disadvantage, or the downside, of the Willamette program is that care must be provided at one of their clinics, so an employer or dependent cannot choose a provider outside of the Willamette system if that's the plan that they choose. In Washington, there are 22 Willamette clinics, with several in the Puget Sound region, including Lynwood, Northgate, Bellevue, Everett, and Seattle. And there really is no financial consequence to the city to offer this Willamette option. Employees could pick one or the other, and in fact, the premium for an employee plus two dependents is almost $16 less per month than Delta, and that would likely be the size family that would most need orthodontia services. It's still probably doubtful that most other employees would switch from Delta to Willamette, since it seems that in general, in talking to folks around the city and talking to AWC, that people become very attached to their dentist, so because of the limitation of Willamette, they wouldn't be likely to, to change to that except for the cost-saving saving curve with orthodontia. But in summary, we would still like to add Willamette Dental as an additional option for employees, and I feel that providing a good and diversified employee benefit package and options to employees is very attractive, not only to our current staff, but to prospective future hires. So, with that, I'd like to thank you very much for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, any questions? So, the chair then will entertain a motion to approve the addition of the Willamette Dental as an employee benefit option.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, thank you all very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is Staff Report, Rent Increase Notification Requirement. Ms. Anderson.
Hello again. So, in January, at the city council retreat, one of the agreements was that staff would research various aspects of a rent notification requirement and report back to the council. I think my reading of the retreat materials was that council was just interested in what are the current requirements, and then what are some different options that could be considered. So, we've looked at that and in enforceable, so landlord could not, for example, charge late fees or start eviction actions if that notice of rent increase standard was not met. The city of Seattle is different in that they actually take this issue through their code enforcement section, so if a tenant complains to the code enforcement office, then the code enforcement officer calls landlord and gives them a warning, and typically they just delay the increase as a result of that, and the person I talked to said it very rarely goes to a notice of violation, it's more an action of advising the landlord that they can't do it, and then there's a change to the approach. So, there you have it.
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thanks for putting this together, Lori.
You have.
I brought this up at the, at the retreat, and I appreciate the background. My question is, do you have examples of two cities in Washington State that have kind of expanded beyond the bare minimum requirements that the state has? What are cities allowed to do, I guess, as far as this goes? I know the state can sometimes be very preemptive with its laws and what it allows cities to do, and, and if I remember correctly, the 60 days for Seattle is something that was carved out in state law, you know, they don't reference Seattle, but they reference cities over X number in a county, you have over X number, something like that, to allow Seattle to kind of be given that. How did Vancouver get to where they were and?
So, oh.
Yeah.
So, I didn't see that city of Seattle requirement, and that's something I'm happy to look into further. When I was looking through the Landlord-Tenant Act, I didn't see a specific carve-out for Seattle. We looked at the question, at the city manager's suggestion, of whether or not, because they were Class I charter cities, they could handle this issue differently. The city attorney and I briefly talked about this and, and didn't, on the face of it, find anything that would prohibit another city from doing something different with this notification of rent increase.
So, you think it'd be permissible for us to, say, follow Vancouver's lead and require an extra 15 days of notice for?
I, again, we didn't see anything that would prohibit that. If the council wished to move in that direction, certainly we'd check into that issue to make sure we weren't missing something.
Okay.
I, it looks like the city attorney has something to.
Ms. Ryan, I can respond briefly to the question.
Sure, please.
In fact, I looked into this quickly this afternoon after Lori Anderson and the city manager and I had a discussion, it was about 4:30, I think it was. I looked at the Seattle City Charter, I looked at the Seattle Code, and I did not see anything in the charter or Seattle's code that specifically addressed this issue, except for the fact that Seattle has this notice requirement. I quickly checked state law, the rent control provision, 3521830, and the landlord-tenant provision regarding the 30-day notice requirement, which is 5918140. And the caveat I have for us in looking at this issue is that the legality of a notice provision depends upon what type of notice provision we come up with, because I think if the notice was too long, one could make the argument that that long notice provision in fact becomes rent control. Because the increase would not be able to occur for a long period of time, which is, in essence, keeping the rent at a certain level. However, on the face of it, I would think that a notice requirement of 60 days or 45 days, which is reasonable and doesn't appear to be arbitrary, probably would pass muster if challenged. The general rule is that there are two statutes on this, so we cannot be inconsistent with those two statutes. As you can tell by my, my discussion here, whether we're inconsistent with those two state law provisions depends upon what kind of notice requirement we come up with. But my preliminary comment on the Vancouver and Seattle notice provisions is that they are legal, because they don't tell you what the rent should be, it just says that if the rent is a more than a certain percentage increase, then there's a longer notice provision, which on its face is very reasonable.
Okay.
Is that enough information for you at this point?
That's helpful.
Any other? Could we do something longer term, or longer notice requirement in, in the mobile homes? Could we separate out apartments in mobile homes?
I, I might just mention again that the mobile home standard currently is three months.
Right, could we?
And that's for a year lease.
For a year lease.
For a year lease. We'd have to take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on the staff report?
Yes, so we had July 30th, which is a fifth Monday, scheduled for a Lake Point update, and for quite some time now, we've been asking you to keep that on your calendars. It's looking more and more likely that we're not going to be ready to give you a Lake Point update on July 30th. I'll know for sure tomorrow, we have a meeting with the Lake Point consultant, and then also the developer tomorrow afternoon, and based on those two meetings, I'll have a better sense of whether we're going to be ready for July 30th, but I think right now, if you were to ask me, if you were to try to pin me down on it, I would say we're not going to be ready by July 30th, but I will let you know via email tomorrow afternoon, and no one-on-ones this week. That's it.
I'm a little unclear on the process on the, on the notification. Are we wanting to, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion, I don't know what the, are we bringing this back at another point, or how, what is the process?
What, yeah, what do you want to do with that information?
Yeah, I, I wasn't, I don't know, I was still thinking it over a little bit. You know, I wasn't quite, I didn't quite have my thoughts together enough to put together a motion right then, and then it was kind of time to move on. I'm, I'm happy, I loved, this is something I definitely want to discuss, because I think 30 days notice is not enough time for anybody to get together first and last months and find a new place to live and move, but I just wasn't quite prepared that second to make a motion, so I, I may circle back with this in a week or two during council comments and bring it up for another short discussion, just to have staff start preparing something.
All right. Councilmember reports, comments, initiatives. Councilmember Danuski.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Marshall.
I was encouraged to see the city's response to the concern and the general community concern for the, some three individuals who have appeared to have been residing and/or loitering a great deal in back of the safe way, so it's a positive step that we're at least aware of that issue and looking at it, and I want to at least encourage and, I guess, speak, speak to the usefulness of, I think, how I see the city changing, as with any city experiencing great growth. We are well, now well past just the sheer boosterism stage. We are dealing with issues of growth and increased population, and with increased population, we're going to have mental health issues, we're going to have substance abuse issues. One of the questions that we were asked as candidates this last fall was how, are you going to do something to deal with the opium epidemic, and every, all the candidates raised their cards immediately, you know? I don't, I don't think, I think we're in the same boat as everybody else as viewing it as a grave concern, but being at the beginning stages of trying to think about ways to deal with it, so I think it's great that the city is aware of issues like the apparently homeless folks and/or folks. is aware of issues like the apparently homeless folks and/or folks who are causing some difficulty in the city. I think we have got to step up our concern for social services in the city in all the aspects. We're doing, I think, a great job, at least with looking at camp unity, looking at and exploring the ideas for the temporary, for the permanent shelters. Those are some issues I see that we're really grappling with. But further concerns to address these issues might be, will we need increased assistance for people? Will we need increased police personnel or presence? Will we need increased law enforcement? What other ideas can we bring to deal with an increase, increasing population from a place that worked hard to get itself on the map and now has big city issues in addition to just being a city, a small city? So just an idea to encourage everybody to think about ways to explore these issues. Thanks.
Excuse me, Mayor. Were you going to take a minute to talk about that letter?
I'm getting to it.
Oh, perfect.
Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add. Thanks.
Councilmember Curtis?
May I change my mind? I went to ETP this last week, and they gave a fairly detailed report on rapid bus transit, both 522 and how it's going to coordinate with 405. And it's, it's a difficult, complex problem that's going to take a lot of money and a lot of time to solve.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I had a meeting with Sound Transit staff last week or late the week before, and yeah, that 522, 405 connection for the two BRTs is, you might be underselling the complex nature of it. It's really, it's really something. You know, kind of going off what Councilmember Marshall said, I would hope that as we look at how we address, you know, what appears to be a growing homeless population, you know, I would hope that we would put more resources into, say, the social worker that's been going out and working with our police force rather than just looking at it from a purely police standpoint, too. A lot of the folks that are out there are dealing with a lot of stuff, and treating it as just a criminal matter doesn't solve the root problems. It just creates a lot of cost for us, and it makes their life more difficult. If we come at it from more of a social services standpoint, where we actually try to address root causes and get, and help people actually get their feet under them, I think we'll get better results in the long run. But yeah, we are definitely having to deal with some different problems that we didn't have to deal with even 10 years ago, 11 years ago when I moved here, so.
All right. So Representative Palet had me brief his new staff person. His staff person, Angie, is leaving and going to law school full-time, and I'm certainly pleased to see that. She's a pretty intelligent lady, and I'm glad to see her take that step. And Representative Palet has, has replaced her, or is in the process of replacing her, with somebody who has been working in the legislature, who has got a lot of experience, and she will be his new aide. And anyway, she was here on Friday with Palet, and so we had a nice chance to talk and explain some of the issues in the city and what we're, what the help is. We're leaning towards asking the state next year. Also, the 522 elected leaders group that Nigel is part of, and I'm one of the co-chairs of, dealing with, with our five-city request for the parking garages and the bus rapid transit. We were informed that one of the things they're looking at is reducing 145th Street down to one lane each way with bus rapid transit in the curb lane. I kind of had a stroke and could not understand how they could consider putting a state highway down to a two-lane road when Seattle is doing everything they can to force traffic off of Botha Way and onto 145th Street. So my concern is, where is all that traffic supposed to go? It can't go on to Botha Way. It can't go on to 145th Street. What are they trying to do? So this has been, yeah, it's, it's still something that is in progress, but that's certainly one I'm going to watch. There is a request from the city of Shoreline dealing with the, what we've, what we've sort of agreed on there with bus traffic transit down to 145th and I-5. They are applying for a build grant, which is formerly known as a Tiger Grant, to fund improvements to the 145th-I-5 interchange as part of the effort to improve traffic flow to the future 145th Light Rail Station. They're asking the cities if they would sign on. A letter has been drafted for my signature if council agrees, and it, they believe it's also going to play a role in the flow of 522 and 523, the bus rapid transit line, that'll be funded through the ST3 project. And they're hoping to secure letters of support because it's going to make a tremendous difference in their application to the feds for this build grant. So if I can have council's permission to sign this letter in support, it will just continue our, our working together. So if there is no objections, I will go ahead and sign that letter tonight. Also, Wim Malden from KBIG was very disappointed and concerned that we discussed the low-barrier shelter last week. It was not to be on the agenda, and his understanding was, it was not to be brought up at all. And so he was concerned that we talked about it. He was concerned that inside was added to the motion that passed, and he is asking the city manager to, if he remembered the final vote and who voted how, and spoke to the exclusion of low barrier for the city-sanctioned emergency shelters. So he's also asked me for an apology for bringing it up or, you know, even allowing it to be talked about. So I haven't done that because I think that council should have a right in making its decisions to talk about what it needs to talk about. So anyway, that's the situation with that. I think that is everything. So there's no further. Councilmember Smith?
It has to be reported on the production of 145th.
No, no, no. Shoreline's not saying, it's, it's...
Is it a cost-cutting situation?
No, it's not a cost-cutting. It's one of the options they're looking at because they're not certain whether the signal jumps will work. And the city of Seattle has talked about putting that road on a road diet for some time now. So I'm not exactly sure where this is all coming from. It was an option they are talking about.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is concern just making sure that the, I mean, the whole point of BRT is that it's on time and frequent and that you can count on it. And 145th, with the constrained right-of-way that they have there compared to 522, where there's room to build transit lanes everywhere, I think they're just looking at all the options they can. I mean, the plan that we've mostly seen has been the Q jump situation. They're, they are concerned, though, that from a traffic standpoint, that that may not get the throughput that they need to keep the buses from bunching up or being delayed getting to the, getting to Light Rail.
No, I appreciate the background because that's just something that, you know, like, I'll let it for us on the, on the... Sure, it's great. People are going to be driving 145th to get to Light Rail because they don't have the bus. And it just, it's, and this would really fall into one of those plus one thing, you get it approved, and now you do that. I mean, I just think that would, this would, I can see where...
It's a major access to the freeway.
That's my point.
And I reminded them that it's also a major evacuation out for Seattle. 522 is, and, you know, putting restrictions on that.
Well, unless the Light Rail Station is there.
Well, I see, you know, I'm thinking about what we went through when we, when we had the five-city coalition and what some of the options were. And it was, again, Seattle trying to push their Roosevelt Station to get the bus rapid transit and not 145th. So I'm not really sure, but Seattle seems to be in there somewhere. So. Dr. Curtis, you have? Okay. If there's nothing further to come before us, we're adjourned.
I mean, I might try to pop that up, have it just see if it's going to... Connect with it, you know, because maybe it's just got misperused somehow. It seems like you're, okay, there, okay, so.
Is that more signing one sheet?
I think you might have a problem with your keyboard. I don't know. That's, that's a problem. No, I don't.
No, this is all the rest of the letter. To be able to dispose of any residual property back to the private sector. Is that the way you remember it, Nigel? You got it? No, fine. And here's this. Well, I have to think it's silly not to have that up.
I'm not the person to ask that.
Do you have a new box?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Sure. Yeah.
Let's see. Here, here, this is a disposable sticky, so go ahead and...
What? You're not required to have them to drive yet?
Did that just happen?
Yeah.
Okay.